I am calling the December 4th meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee to order a peace, stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Citizens comments? There appear to be none. School committee chair update. I just want to comment, now this isn't, please don't take this as a criticism. It is not meant to be. If it's a criticism of anyone, it's myself for being a lackadaisical dictator sometimes. But as we move through, if you look at the planning calendar and the upcoming meetings, there's a lot, a lot, a lot that we have to do. And so I want to be conscious of the time that we allot for things. And so there may be times when I say to folks, is this something you, questions you're asking, do you need to know in order to make a decision? Or is it just stuff you want to know? So I want to encourage the healthy discussion, but I also want us to be cognizant of the time. So it might be sort of like a, when you're in the moment type of a thing. So, but I just thought I would say that to let you know that I'm cracking down, but in a nice way. So, the other thing, personnel subcommittee. One of the things that is, I don't know if you guys have any agenda items pending for any upcoming meetings or not? Because in our goals, we had put down to do an evaluation of the communication plan, and I think I assigned it to the PSC. So what I'd like to do is attend your next meeting and sort of talk about it. And we could go over the current plan and talk about what an evaluation might look like. Do you guys have a meeting scheduled? Upcoming meeting?
No, we haven't.
That's okay.
We have standing meetings on the calendar.
Yes, standing meetings, yes.
Oh, standing meetings. Yeah, yeah, that's all I can, yeah, yeah. So when is the next standing meeting?
Next week, actually.
Oh, what's the date?
December 11.
Let's see what I've got.
Is that where you have this?
December 11 at?
3:30.
Oh, unavailable. At 3:30 P.M.
Yep.
P.S.C. Okay, great, thank you. So the other thing that I have is the letter from the attorney that we've hired to conduct our independent investigation. We met just last week on Tuesday, and we chose Tim Norris of Norris, Murray &amp; Pellicquin. And I had asked the attorney, Tim Norris, if he would put together something for me to communicate to the school committee, and this is it. Regarding investigation process and confidentiality. Dear Mrs. Codyan, first, I want to thank the school committee for entrusting me with this investigation. As we discussed on November 27, 2019, when I met with you, Elaine Santlippo, I am writing to provide the committee with an understanding of my approach to this investigation. As a result of the Thanksgiving holiday, my schedule, and as it turns out, the weather, I will be conducting preliminary meetings on Wednesday, December 4. My intention is to use these initial contacts to map out the first phase of the investigation, which will include collecting documents, including those that I have identified in my list of initial process items previously shared. So that's what I shared with folks last Tuesday, in addition to his engagement letter. Best practice in conducting investigations requires that information gleaned and the process used be kept confidential, at least while the investigation is ongoing. This minimizes the possibility that witness responses will be influenced by advanced knowledge of what other witnesses have said, excuse me, and of what questions have been asked. As a result, my intention is to share very few of the details regarding the investigation until it has progressed significantly. However, I will provide you as the chair with a progress report on the investigation in time for the school committee meeting on December 18. And I will share that update with you at that time. Rest assured, however, that should I become aware of credible information that requires the committee's immediate attention, I will communicate with you promptly. Please let me know if there are any questions, and I will do my best to answer them. Very truly yours, Tim Norris. So, and I will provide an electronic copy to Alita Depost with the meeting materials. Okay? Any, Mike?
Do we know if, whether the 18th represents just a progress report or like a progress update? Progress report. A progress update? Or by then, that would sort of be the length of the investigation? Or are we keeping it completely?
He has, his assurances are that this is not, what he understands at this point, it does not appear to be a lengthy investigation. However, he can't put consecutive time into it. So he is scheduling it around other things that he is doing. It might be where he is at that point. I don't know, he just started today. So as I get more information that I can share, I will absolutely share it. But right now, I can't answer the questions. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. Student representative report. Ibi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, did you have a good break? You had almost a week off. You did have a week off.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. So what have you got for us tonight?
So, sports just started today. So there's no sports report, other than that tryouts were today. They were supposed to be Monday, but due to the snow. Tomorrow night at the Salmon Pond Mall, our symphonic band, which is made up of roughly 115 members in all of the Nishoba community. They're performing their Christmas repertoire tomorrow at 7:00 at the mall. And then our school choir and band, after taking a field trip this week to see the Boston Pops on Friday afternoon, they have their concert next Friday at 7:00 o'clock at the high school.
So that's Friday, is that the 13th?
Yes.
Yeah. 12, 13 at 7:00 P.M.
And then the fall musical, Hello Dolly, is, the auditions for that are just two weeks away. And then the show is not until much later. And then the high school is also hosting a lot of clothing and toy drives that will collect jackets, socks, and presents for the holiday season. In the Bolton schools, Sawyer is continuing their charitable endeavors this winter by also collecting jackets and toys, working with the Marines on Toys for Tots. In Lancaster, their winter concert, the middle school, their concert is December 17. And Luther Merbank has a school dance this Friday. Stowe also has a dance on Friday. And before the break, they had an all-school meeting, which was held by one of the classes, simply to remind kids what important things they can be thankful for in their everyday life.
Very good, thanks so much. Okay, now we have the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. I'm going to report it on two things, and then Dr. Mark Guire will report out on two things. So we had an interesting phone call from Massachusetts School Building Authority about a week ago. And they called to ask us if we could take part in what they term as a readiness phone call. And that call precedes their upcoming meeting on December 11. At that time, on the December 11th, several school districts will be moved forward for further consideration regarding potential support of funding for modernization or new building structures. This particular call did not in any way indicate to NRSD that our application will be moved forward at that meeting. But we are one step further this year ahead of where we were at last year. So that was exciting. I know several of you took part in that phone call. And thank you very much for making yourselves available for that. So very, very, very positive for us. We'll see what happens on the December 11th. If we're not moved forward at the December meeting, then we'll look at the possibility of doing a resubmission again early this spring. So I'll probably be coming to in January and say, do you want me to resubmit another SLR? But anyway, special thanks to MSBA because it was a good experience just to sit there and kind of think things through. So that was positive. The second item for me is just to say thank you to our DPW crews and our district staff. The amount of snow that they have moved in the last 48 hours was enormous. And you know, yesterday morning, when we were trying to decide whether to close or to do a late start, and I looked at the graphic for how the snow was planning on falling, and I thought, a delayed start is not going to help us. We're going to have our kids right out in the middle of more snow. And Rob Frieswick said to me yesterday afternoon, he said, delayed start would have been absolutely catastrophic for us. So really glad that we did closure instead. So it did give another day or so for our students and our staff to stay home and kind of finish off the celebration of the Thanksgiving holiday. But we want to thank everyone that was part of the DPW crews and our district staff for all their hard work.
Okay. Dr. McGuire?
Yeah. I did want to kind of piggyback on what Ibi had to say about the all-school community meeting at the Center School last week right before Thanksgiving. I got a chance to go over there and attend. And it's always a treat to go over there at that community meeting, where the entire community, faculty, parents, and the kiddos participate in the amount of gratitude in that room on Wednesday before we left was fantastic. So I'm just reporting out today, this morning was another late start for the high school. They have their late start times pretty much once a month during the school years, and I reported out earlier. Today, I had a chance to check in with several of the teams who are all working on global education, some issues around social, emotional learning, literacy, and design thinking. Today, I had a chance to meet with the Seal of Biliteracy team. We've got a group of teachers working over there with the Mass Department of Ed on solidifying a program so that students can graduate with a seal of biliteracy in Massachusetts. So that's going to be forthcoming to you folks in this committee. And you'll probably see them present their plan for a seal of biliteracy, for students to be able to graduate and to pass certain assessments, such as the AP exam in certain languages, so that they get a seal of biliteracy on their diploma, which obviously helps and facilitates their work beyond high school and getting into college. So that was a fun meeting to attend this morning. And we reported out on Challenge Day. As you recall, this week was to focus on personalized learning experiences for our entire grade 10 class through the implementation and participation in Challenge Day. We know Challenge Day is a breakthrough experience that shifts school culture in just one day. And in this particular case, it was supposed to happen all week with the inclement weather. We had to reschedule the entire challenge week, if you will, till later in the spring. So unfortunately, we had to reschedule. But we will do it in the spring, and we're in the process of rescheduling that with that group now. So to be continued on Challenge Day.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
I'm just wondering what the date is that from MSBA will actually be notified of?
December 12.
December 12.
Yeah. The meeting is December 11th, but I'd never, quite frankly, been aware of this readiness phone call process. And I absolutely, once you've taken part in it, and feel free, for those of you who are sitting in on it, to say something. But the point is really to say to a district, are you really ready to do this? Like, I mean, the amount of work that entails. You know, we had Rob Frieswick on that call. They had certain specific people they wanted to add in on that call. Like, are you really ready? If we move this forward. But it's still a huge if, right? Because you don't really know who's going to, because as Zay says, sometimes they make those calls, and districts say, you know what? Yeah, we're not ready. We felt ready, and so that's what we relay to them. So, but they'll make a decision after all of those calls are made as to who will make that list for December 11. They started with 61 applications this year. They're down to about 24, 25 right now that they're looking at seriously. And then, I don't know how many they're taking forward December 11. And I don't think that they knew either at that point. So December 12.
Hi, one quick question, and it's about the late start. I know that there was a student voice group that met. Is there a point at which you will share out that? Or will that just toggle into a conversation that we need to have about student voice generally at high school?
We could reach out to that particular PLT and have them come in front of you, if you'd like.
I mean, maybe it's part of a larger conversation that we need to have.
But that particular professional learning team does involve students. It's one of the few that has students involved in it with faculty. So, and it certainly is tied into the dip in their school improvement plan as well. So, you know, that's one I haven't visited. But I certainly can and will report back.
If I could, we have a policy meeting, I think, on the 18th? Yeah.
Okay.
Before the meeting.
I have double-duty committee meetings, and ours is more important.
Oh, okay. No, 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 however you want to do it. But we can always change our date. But my point is that at an earlier October meeting, when we were looking at policies, we sort of focused on a policy JIB, which is student involvement in decision-making. And we had some issues with some of the things that were in it that were dictated by state law. So I have an update from Dorothy Presser that you and I can talk about. But also, it may be an opportunity to discuss some of the things related to student involvement in decision-making and maybe using the group as a resource. But I think it ties together. We can also amend our goals, one of the school committee goals, to focus on this. So I just wanted to give you, but if you want to meet another day, I have a lot of flexibility. You let me know, you let me know what works. Okay?
Yeah.
Great. Other questions for Brooke or for Todd? Okay. So calendar update. Anne Marie?
Mike, I'm going to smile when I say thank you for the opportunity because it didn't go unnoticed. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the preparations for next year's new calendar. This is very early in the calendar production process. So this update is going to focus on the preparations we're making for the task. I thought I'd start, though, by reviewing the steps that go into developing the character, both because some of you are relatively new and might not know, and also because it's like your taxes. You only do it once a year. So it probably would benefit all of us by a quick refresher on how this works. The calendar development process is governed by two documents, the NREA contract with Unit A and School Committee Policy, ICA, which is School Year, School Calendar. The NREA contract calls for the convening of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on the calendar to meet and present a draft calendar to the superintendent by February 1st each year. And the superintendent takes that calendar and either says, oh, I love it, or I want to make some, you know, changes to it. And then she's got until March 1st to present it to the school committee. By School Committee Policy, the calendar sets off, sets for the school days, the vacation days, the holidays, in-service days, professional development days, and conference days for the information of staff, students, and parents and guardians. So that's your piece. This is very early in the process, which starts in earnest in January. But there's some preliminary work. I've reached out to the town clerks in each of the member communities to ask them if there are any days beyond the obvious, you know, the presidential election in November. If there are any other days that they want to be using our schools for voting purposes, so that we can keep that in mind, so we're not both trying to use the same space on voting days. Dr. McGuire has a renowned, almost impossible-to-book speaker, just as good as lined up for a full-day professional development day in March. We need to get a commitment on a date certain when you try to book someone like that. So he's working on that. And if we don't book for a specific day, we won't get him. So that's, that preliminary work has been done by Dr. McGuire. We're studying the impact of this year's trial movement of the early release professional development days from all Fridays to a combination of Wednesdays and Fridays. We're looking at feedback from the educators and from the presenters that we brought in. We're looking at attendance. And we're looking at the use of the special extended learning program that we put in place for parents who wanted to do the work commitments or whatever other reason, someplace for their kids to be taken care of on that half-day that they wouldn't have otherwise planned for. We heard the words of Rabbi Mike Rothbaum at one of the last school committee meetings, and when he asked us to give consideration to the celebration of the Jewish High Holidays when we're scheduling exams, finals, field trips, and that sort of thing. So we're being mindful of that. And we've got those dates ready for us when our work begins. Lastly, one of the final pieces to the school committee calendar, to the school year calendar, is yay, the scheduling of the high school graduation. And that is driven, in part at least, by the availability of the venue, you know, because it is. So we need that place, and that has to be in place before we can determine the last day of school for the seniors, and therefore, the last day of school for everybody. It needs to be set before we can set the calendar. So that's where we are. It's the information gathering phase. The timeline is set. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee convenes in January, get our work to the superintendent by February, and she gets it to you by March.
Questions? Any questions for Anne Marie?
Yeah, I have one question about the graduation. Just for clarification, just my own curiosity. So you have to negotiate the date for the graduation every year with the venue and visitor?
I don't know if it's negotiates the right word. We have to make sure they're free.
Right.
You know, we don't get five high schools all booked the same day. Where do we have the graduation?
Do you see something?
Do you see something? So, you know.
I'm just curious that, and that doesn't make any sense to me. We have the graduation, every graduation. But there's no way that we can lock ourselves in for like a five-year, 10-year year?
Oh, then I don't know. But I can mention to the principal, I don't know if that's possible.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think, maybe you may have even brought this up before because I remember the discussion before. Or if it wasn't around this table, it's been around another table somewhere. So we'll take a look into that.
No, I just wanted to say, yes, I brought the issue of the graduation venue before, but I was exceedingly pleased by what the DCU Center provided, and I think it's a great choice. Which is why I'm asking, if there's any way that we can lock ourselves in so we guarantee that venue for a number of years that we don't have to worry about on the calendar we share.
I agree.
That's a good idea. I'm going to mention it.
Leah?
Very quick clarifier. Who's on the advisory committee?
The advisory committee is made up of, I'm the chair of the advisory committee. Todd is the almost equal co-chair, sort of. And we've got African educators. I'm the boss, to be clear. We've got teachers. We try to get teachers from each level and geographically speaking. We try to get a parent from each of the member communities. And we've got the people from the teaching and learning, because of the professional development wing.
I just thought of something. Do you have more to say? I'm sorry, I didn't want you to.
I always have more to say, but I'm.
Last year, there was an issue with the breach of confidentiality regarding potential decision-making.
That's right.
And I think that, do people take an oath? Or do they pinky swear? What's the protocol for making sure that information does not get out?
We will make sure this year that information does not get out, both by the selection of those on the committee and by where we start talking to. And we could go on to that, absolutely.
Yeah, we do make that.
Yeah, Leah?
Part B is, when you're seeking feedback on this year's calendar, are you going to seek feedback from parents?
You know what? We know what the parents think because they told us last year that the parents are evenly, there's some difference of opinion, but they enjoy having the Fridays so that they have the long weekend. But for every email that I got that said that, I probably got another one that said, oh, you know, whatever. We want to make sure that the teachers get whatever's the best, you know, that they was offered. So we know what they're, and then the parents on the committee, of course, will offer their input. But there's not going to be like a wholesale effort to seek general opinion from all the parents.
Yeah. Why not?
Because we know what the parents think. Some of them think that they like the Friday and because we heard from them last year. And some of them say, well, yep, Friday is nice, but Wednesday's just as good if it's educationally sound. And we've got the three parents on the committee to bring the voice.
But now that we've actually tested it for a year, it would seem to make sense to go then solicit the feedback as to how things actually went.
Keep in mind, we've only had two, two days. You know, so I think you'd almost want to wait a year to do the full scale rather than just only two days.
If I could, because we, because of the concern that was raised last year, we did say we would evaluate it. And I don't think the evaluation necessarily has to come through central office. I mean, all of the schools have a school council. If they could do some dip-sticking, if you will, with their communities, just so people feel like I'm, you know, we have information from a year ago. So I would feel more comfortable, especially since we told the community that we would be checking in. But I don't see why it, not to boss the principals around, because you know I'd never do that, to maybe working through the school council, some kind of an electronic survey to see how people are. And yeah, just, you know, give them, you know, 50 characters to write comments or the things you like, whatever. I'll leave it in your able hands.
Well, we have had more, like, I'm just trying to think. When is the next Wednesday? Will we have had three by then?
They're spread out for.
I think the next couple, I think, are Fridays.
Yeah, they are.
See, that's what concerns me.
I will say, though, on the teaching and learnings part, I've met with Raina, and there is a survey going out to extended learning parents. So in terms of, will you utilize this? Have you utilized it? If you have, how do they, that kind of, from that angle. Teaching and learning, we've done the surveys each Wednesday with all of the faculty in the district. And so that bigger parent component would be the next thing.
So extended learning will do something. It can't hurt just to do the outreach. Do the school councils and let the principals.
Yeah, that would be great. But that lends to on the new extended learning component because we added that option. We are getting feedback from them, those parents regularly.
And Raina provided us with two sets of figures. One with the students who don't usually attend extended learning, but attended on those two Wednesdays. And the second set of numbers from students who go to extended learning but not on Wednesdays, but who added that day for these two, the two dates, September 18th, I think, and October, whatever, 30th, maybe. So some kids don't come, but they came. And then some kids don't come on Wednesdays, but they came. And we've got those figures.
Oh, you probably don't have those figures at the top of your head, do you?
I do.
Of course you do. Oh, okay.
My goodness. Of course she does. On September 18th, the first one, there were 37 children participated in the extended learning program. 12 of them were children who'd come to extended learning but not on Wednesdays, who came on that Wednesday. And then there were 25 children who'd never come to extended learning but came on that Wednesday. The second day, up till the 30th, there were 35 children, two fewer. 11 of them were additional dayers, and 24 were regularly non-participants.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
And the next Wednesdays are in February and April. Will be our next Wednesday professional development dates.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Mike?
Anne Marie, I bet you didn't think you'd be up here for this long. But thank you for the opportunity to ask your question.
You're right on time. So don't, and that's up my timeline, Mike.
I appreciate you bringing up the fact that the committee will consider acknowledging that there are other holiday considerations. And I just want to share with you what I shared up with other people who have reached out to me is that, and I don't know off the top of my head if there's an answer yet, but I think we need to be careful about not inadvertently prioritizing these holidays and not these holidays. In other words, what we don't want to do, if we can help it, is opine about what holidays are worthy of consideration. But then these potentially less celebrated holidays, In other words, what we don't want to do, if we can help it, is opine about what holidays are worthy of consideration, but then these potentially less celebrated holidays, well, these are sort of on the side, but we've got most everybody. So, I don't know what the answer is, I just thought that I would bring it up to, to be considered when we're, when we're developing that policy or that, that.
Thank you for that question. The, the calendar that is now doesn't have any holidays for anybody. The only holiday that is, that you would even call religious holiday is Christmas and happens to fall during the winter break. Two years ago, I think it was, it, it just so happened by coincidence that Good Friday and Passover were the same Friday, we happened on the same Friday. And so the committee discussed for a few minutes about whether, you know, we could, we should have no school on that day because there were two groups of people who would benefit. And then, and the unanimous decision of the committee was that that was not a good idea, because one, for exactly that reason, you know, which ones are the ones that are worthy of celebration? How many people does it have to affect before you put it, you know, so, so we didn't and have not done, however, the principals, though, do send out at the beginning of each example, from what the high school sent out, something reminding the, the teachers that the students might not be able to do homework, and might not be able to study on particular evenings because of these scheduled holidays. That absent students won't incur penalties for having been absent because of the, the religious holidays, also provided a link to the, to some, to a calendar of different holidays.
Could you send that to us so we can see what was, Steve, you have a question?
It's not a question, I was just gonna make a comment, that if you look, if you look at all major, semi-major religions, there are always a number of days that they, that, that would be liked to have no school or whatever. But I think if we provided a calendar of major religious holidays for Muslim, Jewish, whatever, Zoroastrian, whatever groups you wanted, you wanted to list, and just provide a list of these holidays, and just ask the teachers to be aware, and not to schedule any major examinations or school trips on these days. And if you give them a year's notice, you should be able to work around it.
The Beneath does that every year, they, they, there's a calendar that you can access with all of major religions and their celebrations.
Well, then, we'd.
But Anne Marie is saying that the high school has something like that, so why don't we take a look at those things? Because I think that no one is saying we have to have them all off, but a recognition, even to avoid, the rabbi spoke about maybe not having a field trip if you know. So I think it's sensitivity, and also maybe we should look at our policy around our religious observances and whatnot. So, we can do some work on that area, and I think that it's, it's on our radar, and there's going to be a sensitivity, but if we could see what the high school does, and then look at the Beneath listing, that would be good resource for the school committee and probably.
Yeah, you can never go wrong by respectfully accommodating.
Absolutely.
That's okay.
Other questions, comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
You're very welcome.
Okay, and now, without further ado.
Did you just call me a do?
No, without further ado, oh, no, without further Anne Marie, we will have Tom home and give us the food services update.
Yes, so thank you for allowing me to talk about one of my favorite subjects, and that's feeding our, our students and staff nutritious and delicious meals for at least a hundred eighty days out of the year. We've done some really great things so far this year. I can't believe the first quarter from a business yet is already over. I'm sharing with you some numbers of where we increased in year-to-date. We've increased significantly in our à la carte sales, meal income, meal count, and parent payments to date. Those are just some of the great meals we serve right there, and some of the other options we have via à la carte and grab-and-go areas. This isn't working for me, so I'm just gonna go by that one. Yep, good. We received a grant from New England Dairy, which is the new name from the, for the Dairy Council, and we saved a small amount of money in which we bought some fun things to encourage students, not only to purchase breakfast, but to drink more milk. We started a hot chocolate, hot chocolate milk campaign, where we had students come and test the flavorful hot chocolate milk, and as you can see, we had a great time with that. And our, what we're using is a one percent low-fat chocolate milk. Any student who buys a breakfast receives the option of receiving an eight-ounce hot chocolate milk, or they can receive one of the other beverages that come with the breakfast as well. And we've seen, we're going through between three and five gallons of hot chocolate milk a day now, in our cool little dispenser that also came from New England Dairy. We have started a new Twitter page, which, we don't have all the followers we'd like yet, but now we're starting to like some items too, to hopefully grow that, where we're able to send the daily menus, and as opposed to just the monthly menus. Hopefully, we'll gain some of the schools, especially the high school, students, and that way they'll know what's available each day right from their phones. And there you can see a couple of our delicious turkey dinners that we had the week before we left for a week's vacation that we weren't expecting, but it was a nice recipe. You can't really see that, my apologies, but we're including all the nutrient data on our website now for all meals served. So, if a parent has questions regarding the nutrient analysis of any of the foods we're serving, they're able to find that right online. As well as, if there's specific questions or concerns, we work very closely with several families right now who have some severe allergies, and we're able to get them all the information they need in a more per-item basis. For instance, if a child has an allergy to some sort of fruit or milk or, or anything like that, we're able to go food by food, and we're able to give them all the information they need to make safe choices, because we want everybody to be able to enjoy our great meals here at Neshoba. And that's it for the first quarter. We're making progress, we have some more new items that we hope to either start before the winter break or have going by the new year, and hopefully next time I see you, we'll have some more great news to share. Thank you all for your time.
Well, thank you for all you do, Tom. Questions, comments for Tom?
Oh, come on.
I have one. I'll let Steve go first, and then I have a question.
My only question was, have you, have you given any consideration at all for, to offering meat alternatives?
Yes, yes, we do actually.
Thank you, well, you can pay me later for that.
I don't know if you've noticed, but if you look on our websites, you'll notice little red Vs next to all the vegetarian options on our menus now, which allow parents to make recent, not reasonable, but choices with what they would like their child to eat with regards to meat and non-meat options. We've also increased the non-meat options district-wide, because I, I don't know about you folks, but eating a salad every day just doesn't cut it for me. So when we have things like burgers or different types of sandwiches, we always offer a black bean burger. We have experimented with falafel and had some great success with that, so we'll continue to use that as a meat alternative. And we're also able to purchase, for lack of a better word, faux chicken products that are all soy-based. Do you have to be a little careful, because we do have some significant soy allergies in the district too?
I was thinking, I was thinking, you know, like the Impossible Burger or something like that.
Yeah, right now, those are still fairly new and still really expensive.
I understand that, yeah.
So, we're hoping to get there soon, but right now, we're, we're concentrating on some of the more reliable standbys that we've had for some years and past, the tried and true's that we know are good and aren't going to break the bank. When we're selling a meal for three dollars and the burro, the alternative is, you know, two and a quarter. It's a little intrusive onto those great numbers we just showed you.
So, my question has to do, I'll, I'll call it customer satisfaction.
Yes.
Do you do any surveying of the students to test? Because as adults, I look at that and I go, wow, I wish my kitchen was set up like that, but in any event, what, how do you get feedback from students about, at the different levels? Because I realize it's, it's different at every level.
Well, we do tastings. We don't do as many as we'd like to, and that's something I am definitely working on, but I believe it's December tenth, at the high school, we're tasting some new low-sodium sauce options, because with the possibility of changing regulations and always looking to serve the healthiest food options we can. We want to try these new sauces and see if students, if they're palatable, and if not, why? And so, we do do taste tests, and, and also, what I'd like to bring in is like a try-it Tuesday kind of thing, where you'll see more of that after the first of the year. Again, I'm not sure where this first quarter went, but here we are in December, and it's going to be January before we know it. So, we do hope to encourage more of those and to actually host more of those. I also would like to be more active with student councils or student groups in general.
Okay.
Shout out to Tom's new Twitter, oh, just to his new Twitter page, we met last week, talk about outreach and communication and social media and those kinds of things, so his Twitter page is new, and.
And that was pretty exciting for us.
What he's doing to get kids to follow and offering them a free lunch option, and we talked too about what he and his department can do at our March P D Day, Community of Innovators, because I think he's doing a lot, you know, innovative with food and the meal preparation and those kinds of things, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to just throw a shout out to the DECA group, because they're helping us quite a bit with marketing ideas, and they're able to earn credits for doing what they're doing, as well as help the student attrition team. So, with their advisor and the students there, they've been a great asset, and the collaboration's been really helpful.
Beth, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention that we're not going to increase prices this year on lunch.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that Tom brought that up.
Where, where we need to be according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so, no need this year.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, I hope it's not gonna jam up your schedule.
No, no, we're doing good.
Okay, good.
I'll let you know.
Thank you. Just a quick question, I'm feeling new to the committee, and one of the first things that I was very impressed with when I talked to Anne Marie was, she indicated that the food service personnel are all part of, they're all district employees, they're not contracted.
Yes, sir.
I was very impressed with that. So the question I have you is, just out of curiosity, how much food prep do, does the personnel do as opposed to like just taking pre-prepared food and heating it and what have you? How much, like on a percentage basis, would you say is food prep?
We increase every year, and I'd be willing to say a good fifty percent of our foods are processed in-house. We do all our own salads and all those type of things, but something we need to consider too is the cost of labor, and the actual, what's the word I'm looking for? We want to make sure everything's the same district-wide, so if Johnny's and Luther Burbank graduates to the high school, we want to make sure that things like the pasta sauce, or even the, the meat that's going in the sauce is all the same throughout the district, so they can enjoy their meals throughout their tenure here. And if we don't follow specific recipes or even use specific foods, that chain gets broken, and we leave ourselves and, and some of our students in some situations that we don't want to be in. So, a lot of times, because of the cost of staffing and some of the foods we do make, or we do serve, we're not able to produce as much as we'd love to, hands-on. Some of it, I would say maybe about half comes in, is in a ready-to-cook form or a ready-to-use type of, of form.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Tom?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
You know, I know that we're gonna be, we're looking at the possibility of hosting a statewide conference in late January, and one of the strengths is the fact that we can go to our food services and have them help us out that day. You know, we are mapping out some, some logistics today, but it looks like it's probably going to fly. But there's a quiet confidence that comes when you know that your food services program is outstanding, you're okay to host a statewide conference, you know, so, Tom and I'm thrilled to see the numbers.
We appreciate that. Those, those are the days that we really get to shine, our staff gets very involved with, with catering events, and get to show maybe some new design of a, I don't know, something that they've created to brighten up a plate. Which I have to let you know, the manager of our high school, when she delivered the meal tonight, said, Tom, you have to tell them, because of the snow and everything, we had no produce, so it's not as pretty as I'd like it, but it's great that they recognize that.
I was gonna ask you about that, but I'm just curious to know, but thank you.
I'm just proud that they recognize that, and are proud of themselves for the great work that they do.
Thank you. Leah?
Any, I'm, I'm just curious about how you are continuing to hold up with the strain of the stow-water quality issue of getting food over there.
It's fairly easy, the facilities department provides us with five-gallon containers of water, they have pumps, that's the water we use to make the food. That needs to be, whether it's steamed, our steamers are, that we use, are self-contained, so you actually pour the water in, so you're not heating up the whole, the whole unit, you're just heating what's in it. And then the items, for instance, we have a straight-piped combi oven that we are not using any of the steam in at all until we get the clear, but we also have another steamer in that, in the cafeteria as well, or kitchen as well, that we are able to just pour the water in and use it. All the vegetables are cleaned with this bottled water, and anything that may be instant that requires the use of water, we use all bottled water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity, it's always a pleasure to see all of you.
It's always a pleasure to meet you.
And if I don't see you, I hope you all have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
And a wonderful winter break.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, next on the agenda is the, just a sharing of some of the conferences that the, those of us who went to the M A S C, M A S S conference went to, and it's just, if there's anything you want to highlight. I know that myself, Elaine, Mary, and Joseph had an opportunity to attend. In a previous meeting, I spoke about the communication ones that I went to, so if, if any of you want to highlight something that, that stood out for you?
Sure, yeah, it was, it was a great conference. First, I would say, if you haven't followed Dr. Derek Gay on social media, you should do that, he gave a wonderful keynote about how to reframe the conversation around diversity and inclusion, and I cannot summarize it in the shorter period of time, but it was really good, and now I follow him on Facebook, and he has really nice updates on that. But I went to a session on how to successfully implement social emotional learning strategies in your district, which seemed very appropriate for what we're doing right now, given the district improvement plan. And there were two things that I really took away from that presentation that I thought were great to share. One was that, it, it was sort of a case study, I think it was Rent Them, and they were talking about how they implemented it and what made it successful, and what were some of their challenges. But they said, one of the really key factors was making sure that the staff was well-trained, that they felt comfortable, that they had all the tools and understood the concepts themselves, before they were asked to bring it to all their students in their classrooms. And that was something that we talked a lot about when we were putting together the district improvement plan, and some things that the school committee challenged a bit, of, you know, how can we do this harder, how can we do this faster? And so it was, it was nice to hear another district say, we were really successful in this, and this is how we set it up, and knowing that we're doing something very similar. The other thing, which I thought was just really good food for thought for the committee, was that the superintendent and the school committee together basically had a conversation with the community that said, look, we, we've, we've recognized there is a need to stop what we're doing and focus on social emotional learning, because it is so foundational to the education of our students, that the community needs to accept and tolerate that we may not make progress in other areas. For this time being, because we need to prioritize this, this is so important. And their specific example was the math M C A F scores. They said, look, we know that you guys have been pressuring us that we need to improve our math scores, but this is really important, and we want everyone to acknowledge and buy into the fact that that might have to stagnate for a year or two, because we're focusing on something else. And sometimes we think about like, go, 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 we want to progress, we want to progress in so many different areas all at the same time, that, that we need to think about what we're willing to prioritize and what we de-prioritize in order to focus on things that are really important and immediate, so.
Thank you. Mary?
So, this conference, as we know, is for superintendents and for school committee, and I, I think by the number of blue bags I have at home, I've been to at least four or five, but this year they gave a white, a white bag. But I have always found that these M A S S, M A S C conferences give you a real sense of the pulse of education, what's going on in, in Massachusetts. And so as Elaine said, it was very heartening, especially the work that we're doing here, to hear so much on social emotional learning, so many workshops, and, and also just, if it wasn't in a workshop, the workshop could be on something else, but it was mentioned. Also, if I'd stayed to Saturday, I really wanted to go to something, but I didn't stay, high school students, it was a student presentation on student voice, and I wish that they had put that someplace else earlier in the week, because I would have liked to have gone to that. The most useful workshops that I attended had to do with regional schools, and so issues of regional schools, we went to that, budgeting regional schools, and also regional school agreements. And later on, when we look at our agreement, you know, that'll, that'll be helpful too. I thought that the Thursday night banquet dinner, the, the keynote speaker was Jake Kaufman, who is a former Massachusetts legislator for like twenty-four years, and now he's the president of Beacon Leadership Collaborative. What he emphasized was the importance of teaching civic education to our youth, and, and giving the example of our citizenry right now, who do not seem to understand, many of whom do not understand how our democracy works, how our government works, and also the, the Constitution of the United States. And he said, we're seeing that right now, so it is imperative, and we know that the D E S E is really emphasizing that. Finally, I went to a workshop, had you with Maple, Massachusetts Personalized, Personalized Learning EdTech Collaborative, and four district schools were highlighted, and so that was Revere. And each school was slightly different in what they're emphasizing in terms of personalized learning, so Revere was deeper learning, Andover was S E L, Social Emotional Learning, Universal Design Learning, Authentic Learning. Then, let me see, Natick was Professional Learning Communities, and Milis was Standard-Based Grading and Students' Personalized Learning Profiles. So there really was something for everyone to learn there, and I'm really glad that I went.
Thank you. Joe?
I'll be brief. First of all, I just want to thank the taxpayers of the district for subsidizing my attendance at the meeting, excuse me, at the conference, and I just as an aside, I wanted to just say that this is my first time attending the M A S C, M A S S joint conference. However, I did have the privilege in my former. However, I did have the privilege in my former existence of attending several of the National School Board Association conferences and conventions. And I have to say, I was very impressed that just on a state level, the quality of the presentations and the number of offerings for school committee members and superintendents throughout Commonwealth, I was very impressed with. I won't get into too much. I did file a report. If anybody wants to read, they can see what I did and what I did with my time. But I will say that the part of the conference that I enjoyed the most was actually speaking to some of the presenters and had the pleasure of speaking to two women, one from the Department of Environmental Protection and one from the Department of Transportation. They were both there presenting programs that the state-run offers regarding, well, as far as DEP is concerned, reducing waste and pollution in our school districts. And the DOT was, you know, pedestrian and bicycle safety for safe routes to school. So I think from, you know, my work experience in dealing with people at DEP and DOT, I found this to be very enlightening. And they've offered to come to our district to tell us a little more about their programs in the future if anybody has any interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so this is an annual event. I know that when you are working, you might not be able to go for three days, but if there's a time when you can take a professional day or I don't know if you get, whatever they call it when you're working, not in schools, but in like, what do you call it?
Like a personal day?
No, it's not like a personal day. It's like an alternative assignment. No, it's not like a...
Flex time?
Flex time, okay. Something like that. Where you're doing something, like being a part of the school committee would give you accessibility to a day where you could attend a conference or something like that. It's very worthwhile and not just that the presentations are great, but also getting to meet people from other districts and hearing what goes on in other districts is really valuable. So it's just something to think about moving forward. Okay? Great. Thank you. And it was great being with members of the committee down there and being able to talk and, you know, hear what was going on. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Brooke right now for...
Talk about school choice.
Yeah, and do we have to vote tonight?
No, because this is part of a process. So for tonight, I'm just going to put out my recommendation. I put a couple of things upon on the screen for you to take a look at.
You can ask questions.
Right. And then at the, at your next meeting, what we'll want to do is have a hearing, a public hearing. And then those parents who have something to say about whether they'd like school choice, because normally one or two parents come forward and say, "We'd like to encourage that the school committee takes on school choice."
Sure.
So next, after that happens, then you should take a vote and whether we do it or not.
This is the first step.
So this is the first step, right. So I just want to take a quick look at a couple of things. One of the things that the school committee generally wants to see is what are our numbers right now? So where do we sit for the number of students that school choice in? So remember that we haven't had school choice for several years, right? So, and that was very purposeful at that point in time. I think that was my first year here, actually.
I think it was the, I think it was FY16.
Might have been the year before?
Yeah, it could have been FY16. I think it was my first year on the committee.
And so, you know, I mean, for example, that number when I was here earlier was well over 100, you know.
Yes.
So the point was, we wanted to kind of let it kind of settle down because I think that there was a sense that there was almost a lot of students that had come in, like too many students that had been allowed in. And that meant hiring additional teachers. And it was like, we just kind of need to let this settle down a little bit here.
And also created space issues at the high school.
Space issues, yeah. You're absolutely right. Actually, my first year here, we were beyond capacity. You're absolutely right, as opposed to where we sit right now. So really what you're seeing, you know, that's why it's at the grade seven level and down because we haven't, that's kind of where the last of the school choice came in at that particular year. So you can see that the numbers right across for each of the buildings and the grade levels going across. And of course, it's really still at the high school. And the phone calls that I still get, quite frankly, the majority of calls I get are, "Are you going to open up the high school again?" Right? So that's really where there seems to be the greatest amount of interest. Having said that though, we deal, I would say, Dr. McGuire, you and I both dealt this year with residency issues that continue to be problematic for us of people trying to get in without school choicing, right? So, you know, we get people that take addresses but don't actually live there. That happens throughout the district in each of our communities. You know, our please-do-wellness checks to see if people actually live there and very often they don't and we have to call them on it. And there's nothing more awkward than having to remove a child after they've started into the school year. And it's not the child's fault. I mean, the parents know the rules of engagement, you know. But I'm just saying, there's still that much of a drag in Neshoba right now that we still have that kind of thing happening. And that happens pretty much all year long, to be honest with you. But in terms of legitimate school choicing students right now, we're sitting at basically a grand total of 51 students in total. I just want to just touch base on expenditures and such. If you take a look at our per pupil expenditures across the state and for Neshoba, right now, the state's average is 16,506. In Neshoba, our average is 16,171. If you can go to the next slide, Tom, please. Thanks. The key to keep in mind is that what the reimbursement is is approximately $5,000. And $5,000 is the base. We may get a little bit, and I mean a little bit more, like maybe an extra hundred or maybe $200 if there's some other outline issues that the child brings in when they come in. But, you know, you just kind of have to keep that in mind. And I think the other thing I would want to say out there too that you also have to keep in mind, there are lots of things you want to think about. But once you accept a child of school choice into your district, by law now, you own that child for the entirety of their time period, right? So if they come in at grade one, then you own them for all of those years, right? There's, and let's say for example, if a child misbehaves and there's some, you know, behavioral issues, it's not like you can say, "You are bad. We're going to expel you. You need to go back to whatever district it is where you belong." You own that child. So that's really important to always keep in mind so that you're, it's a long-term relationship that you're entering into. My concern this year remains to be the same as it was last year. I'm not sure exactly where Lancaster is sitting at in terms of how far along they are in terms of their development. Bolton, I mean, you just have to drive up 117 and 85 and take a look at the number of houses. And none of those are starter homes. So all of those houses, you know, have children in them, you know. Stow, we always tease and say it's only a golf course away from, you know, because it really is.
But not anymore. We're a putting range now. I mean, one putting range is going to be sold and that will probably be developed.
And you know what? We're actually aware of that. So as much as we can tease about it, that is the truth. And so it just, it's something to keep in the back of your mind as you're pondering this and thinking about this and thinking of the commitments that we are making as a school district to have the children come in. Do we have the room? I think that we do have room in some of our buildings. I mean, we couldn't say, it's not, wouldn't be wide open, but might you have some pockets of areas? You probably could. You know, you just, I think you would need to decide as a school committee, are you ready to make that commitment? What does that look like? My recommendation will probably be that you stay outside of this for another year. Let's see, like, the very situation you're talking about wasn't even on our horizon last year. But I think I said the same statement last year, except this year, we're seeing it start to come through to fruition. So those are things that you kind of need to just keep in the back of your mind as you're thinking, thinking this through.
Okay.
And the big thing is too, that $5,000, when you think about how much our children cost us, $5,000 just doesn't even come close to the, you know, almost $17,000. So just food for thought.
So Steve will start. So if questions, comments?
I was going to say, in the past, we've been, one of the things that's been asked about is children of teachers in the system and would we accept children of teachers? I would think that one of the things we should try to do is to put some numbers around what that would entail and perhaps see what the spread is, how many teachers are interested, if we decided to do it on a limited basis and allow it only to them, which I believe we can do. Is that correct?
Well, the thing that I would caution you on right now and your thinking is spot-on in terms of a lot of things, but that really is a negotiation item.
No, I understand. I understand that.
So that would all come up during that point in time. But I would also put out that we all have had an initial meeting, I want to say in June, I think, of last year, end of May, June, with a collective group that has interest in that as part of the process of negotiations. That topic has come up.
So do we have any handle on the, on any numbers that might?
Or that they would be bringing forward? No.
At this point, I know it's flux.
Yeah. No, at this point in time, we would not have those numbers. But what I am saying is those numbers would come out during negotiation process.
Mike?
So I know that support for school choice has sort of ebbed and flowed over the years. And I know that you can only speak to previous administrations on a limited basis. But given the disparity between the cost per pupil and the reimbursement, that's a more than $10,000 difference. So I guess I'm asking, under what conditions is this a benefit to the district given that disparity? In other words, why, what other things should we be considering? If that disparity has always been there, why have we sometimes offered it and other times we say, "Well, now it's not worth it," but it is and it isn't? Do you see what I'm asking?
I don't know that I'm going to give you a good answer, to be honest with you because you're right, because I wasn't here before. But I do believe, unless you can tell me differently, Kathy, but I believe that during previous administrations, school choice was always, always available, really, until the last couple of years.
Yes, and there was a, I'm not clear on whether or not there was a formula for determining the distribution. I know that one year, a disproportionate number of school choice students were assigned to the school in Bolton because you can be accepted for school choice K-8, but you're not promised, you know, a place in a particular school. So the other thing that seemed unusual to me was a consistent number of 25, nine, grade nine, 10, 11, and 12, 25 per grade, that didn't seem to budge. And there was no, usually in other districts I've been in, they do their calculation based on live enrollment. But it seemed that it was a way to bring in money. It didn't, but it's, the way it was explained to me at one point in my career is that if you're using it for money, it's going to be soft money. But it wasn't being used for soft money. It was hardwired in. So there were a lot of controversial aspects about it as far as I was concerned. And then I get concerned with, from experience, students that choice in as juniors and seniors from other school districts. Typically, kids, if they're going to choice in, they're going to choice in at certain, in kindergarten or in sixth or seventh grade, Milis class. So anyway, there wasn't, there wasn't really a reason or rhyme a reason or a systematic approach to it. And then, of course, we get into the situation where there was overcrowding at the high school. And when we looked at it, really took it apart. It looked like that a lot of our overcrowding was because we had too many kids in school choice and that's when they started doing the temporary classrooms.
So again, just to kind of capture this, it seems like the flip side to this decision would be that this is, because it's really a net loss to the district, according to these numbers?
It could be. I mean, there can be several other, we have to really be cautious with how we speak about it because there could be other net losses to the district in ways that are difficult to ascertain when you first get a school choice student in. Because other things happen along the way of that journey that could influence. And so maybe it isn't even a $17,000 student anymore. Maybe it becomes a 50 or 70 or more.
Right. Well, so that, so I guess what I'm saying is, does that mean that the flip side of that is that this is just a good faith gesture to say, "We are welcoming other students from other districts and we know that we are potentially taking a financial hit on this, but we just, is it goodwill?"
Well, I don't know that necessarily, you necessarily look at it like that because, to be honest with you, I personally, I support school choice. I just, I'm nervous in this district right at this point in time as I take a look at the buildings that are happening. And I think, isn't it this year, we've got 23 students, I think, in Lancaster at the kindergarten level type thing. All of a sudden, you know, and that's where you see it, you know, start to kind of pop. But I, but if we had classrooms, for example, if we had classrooms that were too small for really good and rich education and instructional delivery, then I would look and say, "Listen, you know what? These classes are so small. It probably would really benefit us if we had some additional students into those classes." For richer discussion, for richer, for whatever.
So do we have any data on that, on those specialized classes?
Well, no, I'm not thinking that. But I mean, we watch our numbers all the way along, like every year, and especially budget building season, you're always looking at all those numbers. And so you know where the areas are that, you know, you could say, "Well, we could take maybe three or five extra students here" or, you know, two students or more, to your point, as opposed to a 25 student, 25 student, 25 student. You'd really want to be incredibly cautious with how you look at this. And I think that there's also discussion that, you know, you could look at things and say, "Those students bring in different viewpoints, different perspectives, different," you know. So that could be a benefit to us too. You know, it might bring a different level of diversity that we don't have. I mean, I think there are lots of things that you can look at to say, "That would make sense as to why we would do it." I'm not, I'm not totally discouraging this and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just saying I'd almost like to encourage that you think another year and let's see what happens with some of these developments before you decide to go back into the game with it.
Steve?
Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary?
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Go ahead.
I was going to make the point that the advantage could be diversity. But I also want to make the point that it's been years and years and years that the reimbursement to the district from the sending district is $5,000. And if we look at that and we look at, for example, if one of our students goes to a charter school, we don't send $5,000. We send twice, three times. We send, in fact, more. It could be more than our cost per pupil.
Right.
So that's something else too. I don't understand why, how many years has it been, $5,000? It's been forever.
Yes. It's the same with Metco as well. That hasn't budged. Metco is the program where minority students can come to school from Boston or Springfield in the suburbs. And that is a very, very low, I think it might even be $6,000, but still a lot of the things, but yeah.
My mother taught in Newton where the Metco students came in and the wonderful diversity that they brought there.
Yeah.
You know, how could you put a price tag on that? But that would be one of the advantages. But I think we do have to be so cautious. And other districts look very carefully the way we do and might have two or three or five, you know, one class in one grade level. And then, but then those students become their students for the rest of their education.
I think that's why it's revisited every year. And I think this came out of Ed reform. And I'm thinking about the charter school movement and giving people choices. And it was a, I feel ill-conceived idea that if people are leaving your district, that means that you have to fix your district so they won't want to leave, but they're taking money. But so that was, I thought we're calling it correctly.
Yeah, you're right.
So anyway, but we do revisit it every year. And at one point, we had a brief discussion about maybe doing it at entry points, kindergarten, grade six, grade nine, but we never progressed in that. My concern is the variability. They're talking about that huge development in Lancaster. That's still up in the air in terms of the impact. But when you build three-bedroom apartments and condos and houses, you know that there are going to be children there you know that there are gonna be children there, and and how is that going to impact us? But I think it's the same for all the towns. Yeah, Leah.
Steve?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Leah hasn't had a turn yet. I've been reading Robert's Rules, I just want you to know that I've been reading Robert's Rules, 'cause I've got nothing better to do. Plus, I wanna be competent marginally at this. So um, everybody needs a chance to speak. And before anyone can speak for a second time, you have to make sure that someone who hasn't spoken has an opportunity. So I recognize Leah.
I can't believe I'm the one who hasn't spoken. So one thing I will say about the benefit of school choice is that if you have sixty classes running in any given block and you have sixty kids school choiced into a high school, the idea is, is that you're dropping one kid into each class.
Cause that's the way it works.
You're dropping one kid into each class. That class is still gonna run regardless of that kid's presence. And so the district gets five thousand dollars for a school choice child who is perhaps bringing benefit and not costing the district seventeen thousand dollars in earnest. Um, we know that that is in theory lovely, but not always true.
That's exactly right.
Um, so it's a gamble, really, I think.
It is.
You really roll the dice, which in some instances may be appropriate. So we would need to rely on your analysis to let us know if there are any gaps, if there are any classes that are small.
Too small, i- if if they're too small, that, yeah. But and I I just don't feel that, right now, I don't feel that we're in that position where we've got a class that is too small.
Joseph, did you have any?
No, I have nothing to say.
All right, Steve, did you want another shot at this?
Yes, I have two things I'd like to say.
You go.
First of all, when we take a child on school choice, we may take them in the second grade that has room. And the next year, we may get a swamp of new kids coming in from new housing developments. And all of a sudden, we don't have extra room, but we're committed to provide this this child with education all the way through twelve grades. So it's not just looking at where we may have a vacancy this year. The second piece, you're gonna laugh at this, but it goes back to one of my lectures when I was teaching at NYU about why did McDonald's decide to serve breakfast? Why? Because they had a fixed cost in their building and equipment. And the only additional cost they had to do was their variable cost, which was the food and the help. So that here, we have a situation where we may only be getting five thousand dollars, but that may certainly well cover the additional contribution to the fixed cost because we don't have any more, any more variable cost. In other words, we don't have to provide another teacher for one student coming into that class. You follow me?
We do.
Okay, in other words, we haven't hit, as Brooke likes to use the term, the tipping point.
Right.
Okay, of where one more child in in advanced Latin or one more child in advanced math is gonna have, we're gonna have to arrange for another section or something like that. So the five thousand dollars, on the one hand, may help, and on the other hand, may not. Because the five thousand dollars is not gonna pay for the additional teacher if we need it. But the five thousand dollars may help put the heat in that room along with the five, you know, the equivalent of five thousand dollars for the other twenty kids in that class. So that's, that's another consideration that we have to have. And I really, I I get scared. As we know, this area is ripe for development. I don't know what the size of the one in Lancaster is gonna be, but the the golf courses in Stoller on the edge, one of them is already doing it, as you're, as you're aware, at least part of it. And once you do part of it, so I think we have to be very, very careful. At least until we know if we're gonna get a new high school or not.
Exactly. Mike? Can I give Mike the last word, if that's okay with folks? Thank you.
Uh, can it be two last words?
We'll see, let's see what the first one is.
Well, I'll ask the more pressing one first. Can you, can we return to the smaller spreadsheet? Yeah, the numbers of students? Uh, yeah, yeah, right here. So there's a, there's a, looks like a pretty big jump once we get to the high school. And are are those numbers suggesting that, as Kathy mentioned earlier, that there are some kids that school choice in just at the high school level?
Uh, I would say yes, and that's what I said earlier, that that's the school I get the most amount of calls on is.
Okay, so I wonder if there's any data, because I know that the district is pretty diligent about trying to establish continuity in curricula. But by the time they get to the high school, everyone is on the same page, and I know how important that is. Is there any data that we can collect or that we have that um provides a metric as to how those kids do, those school choice in students do when they are coming just at the high school level? Do they perform at the same level on average, above or below?
So that's, that's a great point. I think right now, we're not in that position because these have all been long, long-term school choice kids, right? They've been in, they've been in the system for years now. What you're seeing here is, as we're flushing it, you know, pushing all of these students through. So we couldn't do a check on that right now. But with that said, I think that that's a really great point that you're bringing up. Because um we are a high-functioning school district. We have very high standards in our classrooms. And um I don't know that we would have students that would come in higher than what we're already presenting. So that has the potential sometimes to create other issues for us.
And potentially putting them in, even at a disadvantage.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right, yeah. That's why I said, there's so many levels to think about on this. It's not a cut and dry, and I I I think that Leah, I think, hit it right on the head. No matter what you, how you look at it, it is, it is a gamble. But I I think Steve's point with regards to to staff and such, I mean, that that's still on our minds all the time. And it's still on their minds all the time, so I I realize that.
I'm gonna keep it at one, that was good, that was great.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, everyone, so we'll be.
We'll do, we'll be coming back to this.
Hearing next, next school committee meeting.
Okay, so the next item is old business, it's kindergarten discussion. We started the discussion on, well, um, a couple of meetings ago. And then revisited it on the November twentieth one. And um I think we're at a point where we have to make a decision because we have to prepare the budget and we have to make plans if we are going to offer, if if we have to assess tuition. So um, anyway, I think that if we're going to, the the thing to do would be to have a motion and then second, and then discussion, and presentation of information.
Certainly, I'm prepared to to represent again.
You have a motion?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, I move that in the Chauva Regional District School Committee, use the surplus funds to fully fund free-day, full-day kindergarten beginning in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. And that any and all remaining funds be distributed to the towns to be used toward the cost of the Chauva Regional High School Leachfield.
Have a second?
Well, I'll second it, but can you do two things together in a motion?
Um, you can, but I would, I would suggest that we break it out.
Into the money?
Uh, the money part, so they'd have two motions, so, um, because they're two separate things. So it might be a, um, someone might be in favor of of one, but not both.
Okay.
So why don't you do the first one first?
Okay.
So.
I move that in the Chauva Regional School District School Committee, use the surplus funds to fully fund free, full-day kindergarten beginning in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
Second? Second. I think we beat you to it. Okay, um, so I think Brooke has some information to present, and then we can discuss, yes?
I just wanna go, just go through this again.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna go through this again ever so quickly. This is pretty much the same presentation as we we've already seen a couple of times. But I've just added one or two quick things here. I don't think there's any sense in going through the numbers because you've seen all this before, so we'll just kinda go through quickly. Again, just stop there for a second, just a reminder, this is like the the bigger picture, right? The kindergarten teachers right now go to eight hundred seventy-one thousand, the IAs about three hundred seventy-two for a total of about one point two million. Going to the next slide. If you break that one point two million up, revolving fund, which is our tuition from our parents that we bring in, is for this current, uh, the the current year would be four fifty-nine, one eighty-one, which would leave a regular appropriation necessary of seven eighty-five, one thirty-three. Going on to the next slide. I reported this out last time, and I just wanna, I I just added this at the bottom. So again, the projected revenue, the tuition would be four hundred fifty-nine. And we know, and I've I've shown you the other slide, which you'll see in a second again, but just to remind you, but we don't need to move there yet, that the DES projected reimbursement would have been five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve for us, which would have been a plus of seventy-nine thousand additional dollars, almost eighty thousand dollars for us in this year. Now, I just wanna talk about that number for a minute because that that number um will differ from year to year. For example, free and reduced numbers will affect it. You, you know, your actual tuition number, number of students in your programs will affect it. There, there's always gonna be changes to that number, so I don't want you to think that it would always be an add of eighty thousand every year. It may be, or it may not be, just depending on the year. But the bottom line is, what what you're going to be doing is rolling this student number now into your chapter seventy funding, right? And that's where we would see the increases through the chapter seventy funding. So it's like they would be considered like any other student in our our school program, right, K to twelve now. So for us to, and we've said this before, but I wanna say this again. We, and we said this even last year when we first talked about it. And by the way, I just wanna mention, 'cause I couldn't, I couldn't recall the last, the last meeting, and I don't know why, 'cause I should've. But all we're looking at doing is wrapping this one year earlier than we had proposed, right? Because we said we knew we couldn't do it in this current school year. We didn't think we could do it in next school year, so we didn't think that we could do it in twenty twenty-one. But what we were really aiming for was that twenty-one, twenty-two year. So this isn't like we're trying to wrap this up five years or six, it's on, it's just one year in advance, that's all it is. Um, we were always gunning for the three years. If we felt that we didn't have the money, we would have pushed it out another year. But, you know, we always knew for, I say for, we, Pat and I have always looked at this and said, is it a priority for us? Because that money, that eighty thousand, for example, right now is lost revenue to the school district. If we were in play right now, we would have that eighty thousand dollars coming into us that we don't have. So again, whether it it's eighty thousand, whether it's a hundred thousand, whether it's fifty thousand, whatever the year is, you will consistently lose that money. The the other side of this is that 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 gap will grow every year between the differential because it's going to consistently cost us, and we've said this to you before too, more money every year that you wait longer on this, right? So we looked at it and said, it made sense for us to bring the proposal to you. Again, it's, it it's immaterial to us what your decision is, we'll follow and be respectful of whatever the decision is. We just thought it made philosophical and fiscal sense to like, take a look at ramping it up in this next year. And especially because it was really only one year out. Uh, so it wasn't like it was a huge trajectory, it just wasn't that at all. So I just, I'll get you to just continue on there, Todd, please. There, you know, recall that that's where we got the five thirty-nine number was was over here, continuing on. You knew that we said it would be five to six hundred thousand is what we thought. In fact, it actually turns out to be a little bit more than six hundred thousand that we're going to need to do this. And that's what we presented to you last time. We said, there's the additional funding that we're gonna need, the gap year funding. And you'll recall that that's because there's no tuition that comes in that year and there's no reimbursement that comes in that year, right? Because the department is always one year behind in its reimbursements to you. So we said, okay, we already, hang on, sorry, sorry. We already knew that we had basically established three hundred thousand dollars that we knew we had in play. And so then we looked at it and said, well, look, if we put another hundred thousand dollars in that same budget line again next year, then we could take a look at pulling two hundred nineteen thousand dollars uh to get to that six hundred nineteen, four thirty-two. So that would would come out of that surplus number. And now, can you go to the next slide, please? This is what we had presented before to you. Now, this is new to this set of slides, but it's information you have already seen. And this is the the total of additional available funds. You'll remember that we need to put eight hundred thousand back into our E and D for the purpose of rebudgeting because we're still on that E and D cycle that we're trying so hard to get off of, but we're not making a huge amount of, but we're making some gains in that area. Uh, we told you that we received additional funding, but that funding needed to go back into regional transportation. You will recall that we had that discussion as well. So that really leaves the school district right now for you folks to think upon of about three hundred and sixty thousand, three ninety-six. And and where do you want that, those funds to go, right? And again, I I I would put a caution here. Please don't think this is gonna happen every single year that we're here. It happened this last year, but it happened for a number of different reasons. I worry sometimes that we may come back next year and you're not gonna have anything like this to deal with, right? So this is, I I don't wanna say it's a one-time thing, it's not. But this happens to be where we're sitting this year, so you've got three hundred and sixty thousand. The other thing I want to remind you is, that's our, I don't wanna say our best guess, but our best estimate of what we think certified cash will come back at. So please don't think that this is the number that's tried and true and and you can take this to the bank because it hasn't been certified yet. And you'll recall that last year, I think it didn't get certified till what, February, March, something like that?
January.
January? It was, it was, and that's probably the timeframe that we're gonna be looking at as well. So this is our best estimate as we sit here tonight, saying we think that this is what's going to be in place. So we still need to wait for that certification to come through to tell us, yeah, this is exactly what you've got.
So you're talking about that certification, meaning that we don't know that we have the three sixty? Or that, are you talking about the certification of E and D?
The certification of the three sixty that tells you, yes, you've got this amount of money that you can.
So, so if we are voting tonight and we vote to approve full-day K, is it contingent upon that?
Um, I think that, I don't know that we need to be contingent on that. I think I would be more, more concerned about the balance of that. Uh, Pat, what are your thoughts? You probably shouldn't have you sitting here at the table, Pat, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Typically, it it's very close. It may differ by, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars, depending on when the department revenue, how they view it, when they look at our books.
But it's not going to be at a sink a hundred thousand or something like that. It's gonna, it's gonna be minimal. So I think for you to make the decision to go for the free full-day K, I think you're in a good position to do that.
It's just the balance that may be questionable.
That may be questionable, but again, you can, there's no hurry for you to decide. Like, you don't need to decide tonight what you're going to do with that balance, right? I mean, we've, we've talked before, and and I'll bring up the Leachfield again. Um, and I think, did we not have a slide on the Leachfield amount of money? Did we put that up there? Uh, did we do that tonight or no?
No, we didn't do it.
Okay, so in in essence, what we were, well, is it the BAN, the BAN, B A N, right?
Oh, the BAN, right.
Right, the BAN, is four hundred, about four hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Four hundred eighty thousand.
Uh, in that ballpark. So we didn't need to go for the full six hundred thousand. And you'll recall that we said on the floor, if we, at the town floors, if we don't need that, we won't borrow that. And that's exactly what we did. It was about, it's about four hundred ninety-eight thousand. You'll also recall that we don't need to make that first payment on that money until the next fiscal year, right? So that, the the first payment is not due on that four hundred ninety-eight thousand until after July first. And we all knew that, and so did the town managers, right? So we all were aware that that's how, and I think that even has come up around this table as well. I don't know if it was to this, but it's come up around this table. So we're looking at basically five hundred thousand dollars in essence that that is out there for the Leachfield um project. Now, you'd all, and oil tank. You'll also recall too that Pat and I said all along, the faster we can pay that off, the happier we're going to be, because we just didn't, we don't wanna carry that debt, quite frankly, right? So we said that at the very beginning as well, that we wanted to have an eye to that. I think too with, and this isn't a driver for us, but the readiness call for us from MSBA, um, we sat back and said, and I think we even said on the the phone call, that that would be one of the things that we would wanna try to get off of our books as soon as we possibly could. Just, again, it's just about keeping the house, a clean house, that's all it is. There's nothing that's driving us or making us do it, it's just being fiscally prudent with shepherding the school district's money. So, um, you know, I think that we would have come forward, we understand OPEB is out there, of course, we all understand that. Um, so that's something to think about. We would have suggested that you split between free full-day K and some money towards the Leachfield, putting some of that back in because that helps our communities right away, right? So it's almost like giving it back to the community because the communities are paying for that anyway. Um, it it just happens to be sitting on our our books because we borrow the money, the communities don't, right? The communities still pay for it, so. So that, that's where we, I think we would sit. Would that be fair to characterize it?
I would say so, yes.
So for us, the free full-day K, I think, just makes philosophical and fiscal sense to do this because every year we do it. because every year we do it, we've got a larger gap between what the program costs and what the money that's coming in, and we're losing revenue every year that we're not doing this. So to us, it makes perfect sense to put that in place sooner than later, but we'll be right up to you.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
I know we've discussed this.
No, I know.
And you've seen the slide several times.
I do have a question, and I just want a personal remark. So, you know, the superintendent was kind enough to sit me down one day and kind of go through this privately. And, you know, I'm fully supportive of full day kindergarten for the district, but I won't lie, I'm getting some tepid pushback from people in Lancaster. And I'm a little bit confused about one of the slides regarding the funding for the full day kindergarten, where in the previous meeting, you provided a slide that said that what was needed for this funding, to start the program, was about six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Right, and that's the same slide that's up there.
Right, right, okay. So I guess I'm not sure I'm understanding the figures, so.
Want to go back to that slide, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
So the full day kindergarten stabilization fund has approximately two hundred thousand dollars in it, and there was a hundred thousand dollars appropriated through fiscal year twenty budget appropriation. There's another hundred thousand dollars that's proposed for the fiscal year twenty-one budget appropriation. Okay. So you're saying that it's six hundred and nineteen thousand, give or take, to start the program? And what is already in the conference and what is proposed for fiscal year twenty-one would put is about four hundred thousand? So the surplus funds from fiscal year nineteen put you at that magic number, okay? But, you have to forgive me, because I wasn't on the committee when this was originally proposed. You stated that the original proposal, the original vote, or whatever the original decision of the committee was, that it was going to be, and I don't want to hold you to this, sometime around fiscal year twenty-one, that they were going to start the program.
There was no commitment even made by the school committee at that point in time. It was just basically, I think, the commitment of such, and I don't think that the word commitment was even used, to be honest with you. I think it was more that we're going to set some money aside now, because we want to start to, because we knew it was going to cost around that five to six hundred thousand dollar mark. So I don't think that there was ever a real commitment made.
But if you take the fiscal year nineteen surplus out of this equation, how do you get to a possible start date of fiscal year twenty-one? Or do you not?
No, no, it would be, I think the plan that we talked about, we were looking at FY twenty-two. A school year, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two is what we were looking at.
No, it's got to be twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, it's got to be twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, if we're doing a hundred thousand dollars. So we're taking it two year.
Right, because I represented the chair, so he asked me what, when the start date was. And I said, well, I'm not sure, but the numbers, it would have to be FY twenty-three.
No, I want to go back and, no, I think there might be some miscommunication here, because we had put the hundred thousand dollars in there, but we had said, if there's any surplus back, we would want to come back and revisit it. So I don't, I think that we still had always thought it was going to be around that twenty-one, twenty-two. I don't think we ever banked on the hundred thousand a year, to be honest with you. But that may have been some confusion.
But if, sorry, the way I understood is if it was only a hundred thousand.
If it was only a hundred thousand, you're right.
Like, if we were only going by budget line items, then it would be fifty-two, twenty-three.
You're exactly right on that.
Yeah.
You're exactly right.
Okay, all right. So, all right, because the question I had was, you know, there was some confusion as to what the significant cost impact would be to the district if we're talking maybe just one year of delay on starting the program. And I think that there's some sentiment, at least in the town of Lancaster, that they would like to see some of the funds sent back for purposes of, you know, addressing the issues with the leach field and the oil tanks, so.
Other question?
May I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
Sorry. So I'm just curious to know, is the support there for the free full day K? As long as some funds also went to leach field?
No, I don't want to say that, I don't want to make, no, I'm just, because I actually reached out then, I said, you know, this one put me on the horns of a dilemma, to be perfectly honest with you. And, you know, I heard my colleague from Bolton and my colleague from Stowe at the last meeting talk about, you know, what they were looking to do. And I thought, well, this is, you know, this is an interesting and ponderous decision for the committee. So I did look for a little bit of guidance from the people in my town. And there was a lot of confusion as to, you know, what it is that they could expect back, if anything, and, you know, what, when the rollout was going to be. And I said, I'm not sure, I'm just looking at the numbers. I told the chair, I thought, I think it's fiscal year, and I'm free if I look at the numbers here, but.
Yeah.
But, and he was saying, you know, and I said that one of the reasons that we wanted this now was that as the vice chair had mentioned, that, you know, you're talking about increasing costs for each year that you wait, so. So there's one side that said, let's do it now, carpet DM, and the other side that said, wait a minute, why don't we just stick to the original rollout initiative? So that, so there was a lot of confusion, at least in the town of Lancaster, but there is support across the board for full day kindergarten.
Okay. Because I think the other, if we don't do this, and I think, and again, it's your decision, we just carry it out. If we don't do it, then I think we're going to need to come back and revisit our rates right away. That'll be our decision next meeting, is what are the new rates going to be then for K? So.
Mary.
So I guess that if we're talking fiscal aspect, we need to revisit the educational aspect too. And I think that there are certain generations that look at kindergarten and say, no, I never went to kindergarten, and look how, you know, I'm fine. Education, because we've all gone to school, everybody is an expert. However, education has changed, since some of the people from a certain generation went to school and didn't go to kindergarten. I just consider it as those little babies there. And for the Shoba Regional School District to remain a high-functioning district, with, we need full day kindergarten for our youngest learners. And ninety-five percent of other districts have free full day kindergarten. We're really late getting on board with this. It's not the fault of anyone in the current administration, but DESE had grants. And that's how, and they were like two hundred thousand, and it was going on for a while. Why, it's, why in the Shoba didn't, I don't know. But we can't, we can look back, we say, I wish we did. But all these other districts have done this. And our youngest learners need this advantage and need to be able to have full day. We talked about this before with the emphasis on academics. The only way to really balance that for five and six-year-olds is that we have social and emotional learning too. We need, absolutely need, full day kindergarten, and we need it to be free for equity issues. And I know I'm repeating things that I've said, but I'm just watching the conversation go right to the fiscal. And, you know, we are driven by budget, and we have to make decisions about budget. But at heart, our decisions have to be about what is best educationally for the students in this district. And I couldn't be more firmly committed to the fact that we need to do it, we need to do it in the past. So that means we need to do it now. We absolutely need to vote for this, and we should do it tonight.
Leah.
So I completely agree with Mary. I am philosophically one hundred percent in favor of this, but I have a fiscal argument in favor of it. So Todd, would you mind going to that twenty-twenty scenario slide? So this slide right here shows the additional reimbursement that we could potentially reap. Now, even if this were to shrink to seventy thousand, even shrink to sixty thousand dollars additional reimbursement, we're going to reap that bottom number next year, correct?
The, we would, yes, it's one year out, yes.
Okay, so I would posit that within three years, we will have all of our money back and free full day kindergarten. So I'm not totally sure why we wouldn't vote for this, because in three years, we will have all of that money back and free full day kindergarten. And then we can talk later about how we can send money back to the towns, how we can put a little bit more in E and D. And then I think we need to have a different conversation about OPEB that doesn't include this drop in the bucket. I think that from a philosophical standpoint, we must do this. This will take the burden off of families, thirty-six hundred dollars, which I know my family suffered a few times, and it's a lot of money. And so to take that off the shoulders of families is important, but it also makes fiscal sense, because we will have all of that money back in three years.
Mary?
I appreciate that insight. I think one thing that was mentioned last year that came up again this year is that you can't project what future committees will or will not do with funds. And so I do appreciate that argument, and I think everyone at this table is fully in support of full day K. I'm speaking for myself, I'm in full support of it. And as I've sort of thought through the way that I'm processing this, it seems like, and I know, I don't want to, I don't want to just rehash what I said in previous meetings, but it seems like we have a plan in this area, and we have a lack of planning in other areas. And I can say for myself, I don't want to vote in a way that suggests that this is my only budgetary concern. There are other budgetary concerns that I have. And for me, a vote against this is not a philosophical vote against free day K. It's just a vote that acknowledges that we have other considerations, that even in ancillary ways are also what is best for our kids and for our teachers in the district. And that's just where I'm at with it.
Thank you. Steve.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so since we had sort of agreed philosophically that we wanted to move forward with full day kindergarten, I thought about it fiscally in terms of a payback period, sort of what you were talking about as well. And if you think about the surplus being sort of paid back to the district within three years from additional reimbursement, that's also three years that families aren't paying tuition. And at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, that's over one point three million dollars that our families would save, and they're also taxpayers, right? So we're saving them in that payback period, one point three million dollars.
That's exactly right.
Like, that's a considerable amount of money to me. And then with respect to Mike's point about we can't commit funds further than the current budget cycle, like, that's absolutely true. And I think about last year, like, last year I was on the committee, I voted for the initial rollout, the initial money in the stabilization fund. But in that year, we have three new numbers, and four, if you include the open seat. And so it's very well possible that if we continue to just do budget appropriations year over year, like, we might have an entirely new committee. And who's to say that they don't have different priorities? And say, you know what, like, we're not doing this, we're moving on, we're doing something else with the money, so. For me, I think the only way to guarantee that this actually gets done is to do it now. And there seems to be, like, for me, it's a win-win-win situation, and we can get this done now and have a bigger conversation about other budget priorities, and there's still additional surplus there. It's not saying, sorry, I keep pointing to your computer, because you have the presentation. But we're not saying that we're going to use every extra dime we have on this proposal. Like, there's other money, a hundred and forty thousand-ish dollars to do something else with within the current year. So for me, it's just, it's like a win-win-win-win.
Steve?
Okay, I think two years ago, I argued that we were very philosophic, and that the committee as a whole at that point was philosophically in favor of all-day free kindergarten. And I know that in interim moments, I have occasionally argued against it, or have argued to have it spread out, the commission, the commitment of the monies to do it. I think we should do it.
Are we ready to call the vote?
Do you want me to call the vote?
We have to vote to call the vote. Call the vote, and then we'll vote to call the vote. No, I didn't, didn't I say?
Did you?
I don't understand.
No, I can call the vote, but I just want to make a few comments, if I may, as well. First of all, I want to thank everybody for their commitment to this and a thoughtful approach. And, you know, one of the hard things about this position for me is the fiduciary responsibility, being cognizant of the fact that our overarching goal is to ensure the ongoing achievement of all students. Because of my experience and my background, I've seen the benefits of a full day K program. And it's not having these little tiny people sitting at desks and staring at screens. It's, these programs are just, they're wonderful. And you ask anybody who works in an elementary school, or even in a central office, if they're having a bad day, they go to kindergarten, because they're having a great day. Three hundred and five towns in the Commonwealth have full day K. We don't. It reminds me of when, a couple of years ago, we approved monies to have the level literacy program in our elementary schools. We were ten years behind in level literacy. I was, it was, I didn't know, it was an embarrassment. So I think in terms of that, educationally, it makes a lot of sense. But I think what we forget sometimes is, is that this is not cost recovery. We collect tuitions, but we subsidize the difference. So we are paying money. I agree with Elaine's analysis, you know, this is, thirty-six hundred dollars for young families is a lot of money. And I think that, you know, we value our partnerships with the towns, but our young families are taxpayers, and they live in the towns. And I think it's, I think it's time. So I'm going to call the vote without objection. All those in favor of authorizing, what's the amount?
Two hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Oh, I have it, oh, wait. Two hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The surplus from FY nineteen to be applied to the existing funds and the budget appropriation from FY twenty-two, to support full day K. All those in favor? opposed? Okay, five votes carried, thank you. So now, there is the issue of the balance, and we had a motion that... Do you want to make the motion again, Mary?
Are we going to have a discussion?
Yes. You better read Robert's rules.
First, we do this, move that I had any and all remaining funds be distributed to the towns to be used toward the cost of the Shoba Regional High School leach field.
Okay. Anyone second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Oh, did you?
Well, since I made the motion, I could say something first.
You could, but I think the superintendent wanted to say something.
I think, I just want, I want to be cautious again to remind you that we got, we want to wait for that certified cash number to come back, so that we know exactly what we're talking about. So whatever number you put out there tonight, make sure that it's not a specific number, because we don't know what that specific number is going to be.
I picture says the balance.
I was going to say, yes. I just want to make sure that we're.
Right, okay. Now, what I was going to say was exactly that, that I think we should really wait on any specific number until we have certified what, exactly what that is, because we don't want to get ourselves into it.
But we could indicate our intent.
Yes.
Without putting a price tag on it.
No, just say the balance.
Yeah, say the balance. You want to make your motion again?
It's not, since we lost the first part of it, it just doesn't sound right, but I move. That we, that we.
Allocate.
Allocate, like that, allocate the remaining funds from the surplus, the remaining surplus funds to be distributed to the towns to be used toward the cost of the Shoba Regional High School leach field. Tank and tank.
Reduce the bonding, isn't it?
Yeah, I was going to say, let's be cautious with that, because that money is not, the towns haven't done this, the bor, we, we as a school didn't have done that borrowing, right? So to give it back to the towns, I think, I'm not sure that that's the best way of dealing with this, is what I'm saying. You might want to let us just check on the best way to make that motion, because the school district has borrowed that money, it's not the towns. So, I mean, by, that's why I say, by putting the motion so that it is to make, the payment is to go towards the borrowing, it's the ban, really, the, what is it, anticipated note, right?
So should we table the motion?
Postpone.
That's what, I would suggest you postpone that, really, and let us get the right language, because, but I think the spirit of intent that you've got right now towards this is exactly, we agree complete with, completely with the spirit of intent. And again, we want to, we want to get rid of that little moan, I mean, it's not a little, but I mean, we want to get that off our books as soon as we can.
I have reached out to council, our treasurer has reached out to council to make sure that we're doing everything properly. All right. Mike, do you have a question or comment?
In a $55 million budget.
No, I just had a question about information that we might get in order to finish the discussion. And I think that would be, yeah, like, what does the bonding look like? And if we put a chunk of money, like, what does that mean? And how does that affect, how does that trickle down to the towns? Or I think we need a presentation or more detailed information.
Sure.
About that.
I should have that included.
And then I don't know if it's appropriate to piggyback onto that discussion, but if we're gonna talk about OPEB, there's certain data points that I think we need in order to inform that discussion.
Okay. What are you thinking about?
I'm thinking about what are our annual cop of the pay-as-you-go costs? And how close, how much buffer we have every year? And that pay-as-you-go cost, we know those are increasing every year. Are we getting close to not meeting those needs? And make, or, do you know, do you know what I'm asking?
No.
No, because it's budgeted, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's.
Right, but how much is that budget, how much is the pay-as-you-go budget increasing every year? Because at some point, at some point, it should start increasing almost exponentially as healthcare costs are, if they're going up at the same rate as healthcare costs are. And at some point, it's gonna be difficult to meet those costs in your general budget.
So this is for discussion on OPEB, okay? So, and additional information, we don't need to talk about it right now.
Okay.
So what I have is that we want information to make an informed decision about the surplus funding as it relates to offsetting some of the expenses related to the Leach Field. So that's one. The second thing, in a discussion regarding OPEB, that we pay as we go every year, and we are interested in the percentage of increase per year. And as we project, do a projection, do the annual increases for, say, the past 10 years, have they been consistent? Are we expecting a spike in the increases based on anticipated retirements? So if we could look at that, when we have a discussion about OPEB, which I assume will be when we're talking about the budget. Okay? Yes, Leah?
Quick question, on the giving the money back to that ban, do the towns get different percentages? Because they borrow different, or they agreed to pay different percentages?
Right, everything's based on the percentages.
Got it.
Anytime. It would be in the form of using E and D.
So it wouldn't just be divided by three, send it back?
Oh, no. No, because nothing in the budget is, you know, equally divided by three. Wouldn't make sense to do that.
Okay. Okay. Amir?
So a question for Pat. When, when would we, when would monies be certified? That we would know some of this?
Well, we're working on that now, so I'm at the mercy of the Department of Commerce, so.
So with that in mind, we don't have to rush to the next meeting. We don't have to rush on this. This is our intent, this is what we'd like to do.
Right.
We're through January, that's okay, too.
I think it's just important that if we have, just as we put things in the parking lot that we wanna talk about, if we have requests for information in order to make decisions, that the administration be aware of those as soon as we're aware that we want information. Anything else about this topic? Okay. Don't go anywhere. I'm going to take building rental rate off the agenda, and move it to either the next meeting or the, is there, is there a timeline for that, or?
Actually not. I don't think there's a timeline for that.
No.
It doesn't really affect anything in the budget.
So the, the, just, the rentals, do they go from year to year, or whenever we just decide to change them?
To be honest with you, we hadn't looked at them for years until.
Oh, we know this last time.
The last time we looked at them, yeah. And actually, we have, one of the things that we wanna do is look at, are we, because we went up a little bit, are we losing?
Okay, so it doesn't have to be part of.
Capacity, like, there are people still, are falling off or what have you. And so that's anything that we need to take a look at.
It doesn't have to be part of the budget discussion?
No.
No.
Okay, so we can, because we have a lot of budget discussion to do.
Yeah.
So we can push it down the road to when our budget is in better shape. I know that when they did the, one of the audits or that were done by either Masfo or the Melanson and Heath indicated that we were grossly under-renting, that our fees were less than. And it ran afoul of the laws, which say that you can't use Chapter 7 these money for anything other than educating children, but we were sort of doing, there was a conflict. Because if the rental, the rental fees were not covering the cost of custodial lights, things like that. And so that was another area that the district was subsidizing, where it should have been cost recovery. So we wanna make sure that, so what I'm saying is that there'll be an analysis to make sure that it is cost recovery, and we will adjust rates accordingly?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, so Treasury report. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
The OPEB line, one of my favorite topics. The OPEB line, is that what's, that's actually sitting in a bank? Or is that the money we decided last year to hand into a large investment fund to invest for us? Is that what that, that number, it's the 400 and 300?
Yes.
So that's into a trust fund now?
Yes. Yes, that's why it appears like that.
Okay.
And I wanna make the point that four years ago, the amount in that OPEB trust was zero.
I know.
So we've come a long way, baby.
I know.
Okay. I mean, we have a long way to go. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that over the last four years, a more forward-looking, responsible approach has been taken towards contributing to OPEB. Okay, and then we have one more, operations? Mary Rollinson, the negative numbers, is that, I have to do the.
That was that additional teacher we had to hire because of numbers?
Okay.
Okay. That'll show up every month now, every year again.
Okay. Elaine?
I, so I know I've said this before, and I know it's early in the school year, but I really hate to see budget versus actual have any zeros in that column.
I know, well.
It's just, if you're, you have an idea of the projected expenditures, right? Like, you have estimates?
Yeah, I do, but I'm very cautious right now, because I don't have a lot of the, the numbers, say, for the assessments. And, I mean, as far as I know, whatever's in there, we're going to spend by the end of the year, and that's why I put zero.
I think we wanna make sure that we continue to be conservative in our approach.
As soon as things come to light, like, if I, if I thought that we were going to go over, or I determined that a cost is gonna be significantly lower, I would then put that number in there. But at this point right now, like, in system-wide, I don't have anything that's showing up like that.
It just seems like if you have projected expenditures, you would use the actual numbers, which would, you know, there may be $1,000 over, $1,000 under there, which would be small potatoes. But then you'd be using your actual projections instead of just zeroing it out.
It would consume a lot of time to go through all of that detail in some of the lines in the budget that are under those categories. And it would be, like, with facilities, I mean, we, at this point, 10:31. It's, this is as of the end of October, so we hadn't even had a snowstorm, so. You'll see some movement probably in the next couple of months.
Other questions? Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, there do not appear to be any subcommittee reports, but Budget and War is going to meet on the 18th.
Yes, we'll meet at 4:30, and we'll go over some of the, some of the concepts of how the monies are allocated to the three towns, and what the formula, the state formula is, just so people have an idea of what, when we talk about those things, what they are.
Thank you, that sounds good. Leah, you'll let me know if there's a time we can meet? That'd be great. And then PSC is going to be the 11th. Sounds good. Consent agenda, can I, do I, I do the warrants and the minutes separately, correct?
No, consent agenda is that you do it all together.
Okay.
Sorry, did we sign the warrants out of here? Oh, sorry. No, we'll do it after. Make sure not, make sure.
Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So hold.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor? Items to be considered for next and future agendas? I have, oh, let me get to my planning calendar. Okay, so if I'm looking at the parking lot, I think we did Unified Sports.
We did.
Okay, those three policy dots. I would like to complete the policy review at the next meeting. And I, there were just a couple that we held out. I have updated information to answer questions, and then we can approve them in form, send them off to MASC. And that doesn't mean we can't change things, so just FYI. We have to do the rates now for Extended Learning, but not full-day K. So when do we wanna do that? We have to do that next time?
I'll do that next meeting.
Okay, and then I'd like to request that the special education presentation be January 15th.
Yeah.
And everyone has their assignment for that, okay? Anything else? Let me see.
I think next meeting is gonna be quite full, I think.
Okay. So we're looking at the 18th. We've got the business manager report. We've got, oh, the chorus is coming. Oh, wonderful. They come and sing, it's wonderful. IT, teaching and learning, staff roles.
Yeah, that's what we're just talking about.
We're just talking about that.
Can we kick that down the road?
We can, because we put the T and L visioning down the road, and we wanted to do that first.
Sounds good, okay. Technology update? Staffing update? The school choice hearing? Now, do we do that before the school committee, do we?
It, it tends to be.
Are we doing it at 6 o'clock?
I think, because it's generally pretty quick, I think we can probably do it right at 6 o'clock, and then just start our meeting at 8.
Yes, okay. Capital plan update?
Yeah, Todd was just suggesting, should we put, do we put off the technology update?
We could.
I think we're gonna have to really sit down and take a look at this for timing, because.
We are, but I'm just wondering about, about when we do things. We're gonna have the technology update, and then we jump ahead to January, and we have the budget workshop for the 25th. Do we need to have these updates before the budget?
See, that's exactly my thinking, yeah.
Yeah, let's leave it, let's leave the technology update. And staffing update, I think those are important. Yeah, this is all stuff we need to do. But the visioning, you pulling that or not?
Well, we had moved it, last meeting we pushed it.
Okay, so with the relationship.
We wanna do it before the budget.
We wanna do the visioning before the budget.
Yeah, no, we gotta, look, we have a shot at getting out of here before 8:05.
But that does not come anywhere near your record.
I know, no.
So we'll do T and L visioning next meeting, and that'll be.
Three minutes.
I would expect that you would have the MSBA announcement, maybe part of the, oh, capital plan update?
Capital plan, Pat, memory serves me right, we're ready for next meeting, right, for capital plan.
Yes.
You know, who knows what's gonna happen at, with MSBA, whether we're gonna be on that list or not?
Well, by the 12th, if we have the meeting on the 18th, we'll know.
You'll know.
We'll know whether we're sitting down or not.
All right. Okay, well, you did a good job sticking to times and everything tonight, so I am confident that for the December 18th meeting, the same will be true. Anything else to add for the parking lot, any other topics, or, yes, Leah?
So I just wanna be true to what we heard parents say in the auditorium those couple of nights, and that was to remain focused on having the school committee bear some responsibility of investigating the role of student voice, empowering kids at the high school. So I know we're gonna talk about it at the policy level, but also to consider how we will manage that outside of just the policy level.
Yes, no, no, absolutely. I think perhaps you and I can start that conversation and look at some, I already had some ideas about some things we might do, but we're policy, that would be implementation of policy. So we'll just, we'll do it, we just have to figure out the right roads to do it. But I absolutely agree with you.
And so maybe that would be like February, like, down the road?
Could we, let's talk about it when we meet, and then we can plug it in. Okay? All right. But it's in, is it in the parking lot? Can you put student voice in there?
No, it's in the driveway.
I put it in the parking lot, it's there.
All right, so any other things for future or next agendas? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
What if you do adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All favor? 8:05. Good job, you guys.